3rd, 2020. We're here for the purpose of the regular meeting of the Elmhurst City Council. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The governor of the state of Illinois has declared a gubernatorial disaster proclamation in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, restricting individuals to gatherings of 50 persons or less, and all of the city elders is covered by this disaster. In light of the ongoing COVID outbreak, Mayor of the city of Elmhurst, that's me, has determined that an in-person meeting for August 3, 2020 council meeting is not practical or prudent in light of the disaster. That's the official language I have to read. Basically, we allow elected officials the option to, during this crisis, we allow elected officials the option to attend in person with proper social distancing or to video in, which is allowed through the governor's proclamation. So, without any further ado, I would ask you all to rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, as you can see, some of the challenge we have as we do half remote and half local is you're going to get some audio delay, so please bear with us. I would ask Port Taylor to please call the roll.
Cahill.
Here.
Toledo.
Here.
Park.
Here.
Levin.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Hanquist, absent.
Brennan.
Here.
Mulliner.
Here.
Doiter.
Here.
Brumis.
Here.
Leader.
Go ahead, Norm, say it again.
Here.
Dunn.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Palmsky.
Here.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Thirteen present, one absent. We have a quorum, we are in session. We've got Ben Harbor, who's from CDM Smith, who's going to bring us up to speed on the metro train station. I would ask all aldermen, if you have any questions, either wave at your camera to get my or the city manager's attention, or if you've been working with this software we've been using during this time, there's a little raise your hand button that you can activate with your mouse. So I ask you to do that if you want to speak up or want to be recognized. So without any further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Harbor, he's with CDM Smith, he's going to bring us up to speed. Actually, before I turn it over, real quick, I will remind council that city of Elmhurst is in line to receive over $20 million in grants to cover the approximate $23, $25 million cost of our metro station. Those grants are still enforced, even though with the pandemic we're facing and we're entering phase two. And CDM Smith is going to bring us up to speed. Mr. Harbor, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mayor Morley. Greatly appreciate being able to speak to you, the council, and to staff this evening. Just want to make sure everyone can hear me. Perfect. Double thumbs up, great. So I believe everyone has received a packet that I'll be going through this evening, and I will be going a little bit slower, assuming that there will be a delay, possibly depending on your connection. So as Mayor Morley mentioned, we're here to present a little bit of an update on phase two. Just a reminder that phase one, we went through to define the project, met with the public, met with staff, met with the council, and went through kind of a fact-finding process, coming up with a preferred alternative. With that preferred alternative, we were able to pursue grants, as the mayor mentioned, at the federal, state, and local levels, and very successful with that, which has allowed us to move on to phase two. And the first part of that, just as a reminder, since it's been a while, is a pretty robust public outreach process. We used some very rough images at the end of phase one to represent what the station might look like. And with this first part of phase two, the goal is to reengage the city, to reengage the public, provide input on what the new station should look like from an architectural standpoint. So walking through today, just a couple of notes. As I mentioned, we're going to be going through this preferred architectural concept, and we have to narrow that down through public input. There are, this will allow us to move ahead with the final engineering, so actually putting the drawings and documents together that will allow for bidding and then for construction. And that's about a two-year process. The other thing that we'll be doing at the same time is going through some pre-engineering work, which involves doing additional surveying at the site, geotechnical investigations, and continuing to meet with the agencies that we've been working with. So to specifically focus on the public outreach approach that we've been asked to give a little bit of an overview and preview, what to expect over the next probably four to six months. Tonight, obviously, is the first step of that with the city council presentation. The second part of this that we've proposed is to meet with the Architecture and Building Commission, and we would anticipate that this would happen towards the end of August, and we're working out a date right now with the city. During that meeting, we would be presenting and bringing the commission up to speed on the past elements of the project and critical data that has led us kind of to this point. Following that, there'll be a public visioning session that we're anticipating in the fall of this year. This will have a couple of different components that we were already planning to both have, we were already planning to have components of that that were virtual, and obviously that's going to become more robust with the current situation. So we will have an online survey, asking the public for input on architectural character, other buildings in the downtown that they think are good precedents, not specifically showing images of the station, but again, looking to kind of build a consensus about how the community views the downtown and what they'd like to see as a character of the station. We will also have a public visioning session as part of that exercise, so we'll have the online survey. And then previously, we would have done this in person, but we are proposing to do this virtually, and we have experience at CDM Smith doing this on projects around the country. So the slide here is just to represent another project that we did a virtual room for. So this would actually be a three-dimensional image of council chambers, for example, and each of the boards that we would normally print out would be virtually in this room. This allows the public to click on the link in each of these images, actually look at the boards, provide comment, just like they would in person. And we would also do a short presentation at the beginning, again, to state the goals of the workshop, and we would conclude after about 45 minutes. So this is the solution that we're proposing to deal with our virtual environment. Just wanted to show a couple of examples of some of the boards and things that we may present, and also just a little bit about the online survey. In phase one, did a Survey Monkey survey that asked specific questions and allowed us to gauge data that we could present to the city to help inform and justify a lot of the decisions. We'd continue to do that in phase two. Following that outreach, we would have a second Architectural Building Commission meeting in the fall. Pardon me. During this, we would talk to the commission about the information that had been received, and we would work with them to determine the direction on three style alternatives. So we would come back in a third meeting, presenting three styles of the station with models and with renderings, with drawings, receive feedback from the commission, and eventually, we would present to committee of the whole, anticipating winter, spring 2020, 2021, and would receive, hopefully, final approval of the selected alternative. And with that, we would be allowed to turn the engineers, architects, designers loose to complete the documents that are required for bidding, and we would hope that we could start that in spring of 2021. Just a reminder, as the mayor had mentioned, we do have some, with the funding grants, these are not open-ended, there are programmed years for each of the funds. So I just wanted to show, as a reminder, the congestion.
Excuse me, Mayor. Point of order, I apologize, but we have an audience full of people, and this presentation is inaccessible unless they are connected to a device. Is there a way for us to pause for a moment and have us all turn off our mics and have something that's audible to everybody in the room, please? I think maybe Mr. Grabowski's working.
Yeah, give me a second. Jim, did you hear what Owen said?
I did not, but I think I understand.
Well, these folks here can't hear what's going on unless they're signed in on their phones, I gather.
They're going to pull up the board stocks.
Here.
Slideshow on the big screen, and then Mike Stenson will click along with it.
Will they be able to hear Ben?
They will not be able to hear Ben.
Can they hear him in the other rooms?
They can hear him in the other.
What rooms do we have open?
Four and two and three. While the conference room's open, otherwise, there's issues if we can't have it.
Yeah.
Mayor, can we at least tell the people how they can access?
Yeah, that's what I'm going to do. So, long story short, the city council isn't set up 100% for how we handle things, half online, half in person. And when we've tried to do audio in the audience at the same time we do audio on our computer, we get feedback that messes with our computer, with our recording of the process. So we have conference rooms across the hall. If you want to watch us on TV and hear the audio, you're more than welcome, this is for this one presentation. Obviously, you'll be able to hear us when we conduct a meeting here. It's just, there's a contractor who is Skyping in, or whatever we call it, zooming in, and he's going over the train program right now, reconstruction of our train station. So this is a unique situation. If you want to hear what our contractor is saying, you can watch it on TV right across the hall. The remainder of the meeting, you'll clearly be able to hear us like you're hearing me now. So does everyone in the audience understand that? Again, it's, we're limited by how many microphones, and then if we try to turn on a laptop, it doesn't record well, and then we don't have an adequate recording of the situation. So what we've done is, we've got Mike Stenson, who's going to scroll along with what Mr. Harbor from CDM Smith is saying, and you can at least visually see what we're talking about. If you want to hear, I know it's not the most ideal situation, but you can watch it on a big-screen TV in the other room. You good with that? Alderman, Ivan.
Are we broadcasting live so that if the members of the audience went onto their own devices?
Yes, we are broadcasting live on our YouTube channel, right?
And if you, so if you go to elmhurst.org and then go under City Council Videos, then you can watch and hear exactly what we're hearing while you're in this room.
So kind of a hybrid third option, if you have your phone with you, and you can earpiece in, you can listen as well. Okay, Alderman Palmsky, you good with that? I appreciate you bringing it up.
Sorry for the interruption.
No, 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 we've got to do what we've got to do during these strange times. Ben, I'm going to ask you to, let's do this, Ben, why don't you back up one slide, please? Just for continuity's sake, because I don't want to have you start halfway through this slide. Hope I didn't throw you for a loop.
That's okay. Is that?
Perfect, that's good enough. Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. So as I was mentioning, with the public visioning workshop that we'd be holding, these are just a couple of the examples of words and questions that we would likely ask. We would do this in an online survey format that would be open for several weeks, and that would run concurrently with the single-day live event, which would be virtual, where we would solicit feedback and be able to present. I apologize, I keep getting an annotation request from Elaine, is that about annotating the shared content? Prove decline?
Elaine, if you can hear me, you have your microphone on mute, so I cannot hear you. Can you unmute it?
I can.
Elaine, we unmuted you from our end. Do you have a question?
No.
There you go, asked and answered. We're going to mute you now and turn it back over to Mr. Harbor.
Thank you.
Mr. Harbor.
There we go. So following that public workshop and survey information, we would meet with the Architectural Building Commission for a second meeting in the fall of this year. During that meeting, we would review the information that we'd received from the online survey, as well as the in-person session that we would be holding virtually. In that, we would discuss with the commission findings, and we would work with them to determine three styles that CDM Smith should move forward with in exploring alternative styles. So, for example, this could be very modern, this could be very historic, it could follow a style of another building in the city. So whatever those options are, we would have three that we'd move ahead with. In the winter of this year, we would anticipate meeting again with the Architecture and Building Commission. We'd review those three designs, which would include renderings, models, drawings, data, and after all of that, we would modify those alternatives based on feedback, and we would present that to the Committee of the Whole, which we'd anticipate being in the winter to spring, which would be 2020, 2021. Following that receiving of approval with any minor modifications, that would allow our engineers, architects, designers to move ahead with the final design, which will take about a year and a half or so, and we would hope that we could start that process starting in the spring of 2021. As Mayor Morley had referenced, the funding sources do have determined programmed years, and each of these varies slightly. When we say year, several of these are federal fiscal years, and then several are state. The congestion mitigation air quality program, which the city received over $14 million from, which is the primary source, is currently programmed, which would mean the funding would start to be spent in 2022. Surface transportation program, also programmed for that same time period. And then the city also received the Illinois Commerce Commission's Great Protection Fund for the pedestrian underpass, that's part of the project, and that is anticipated to start funding in 2023. And then there's also a metric grant, which city has, I think, some flexibility, as I understand it, with Metro potentially. So just a reminder that missing some of these windows, there are ways to potentially ask for extensions, but as we all know, with the current transportation funding and funding generally in Illinois and across the country, it's becoming more and more competitive to receive these funds. So the best chance to maintain all of the hard-won grants is to continue to try to hit these dates. But as I mentioned, there are methods to ask for extensions. So with that, that's just a very quick, high-level overview of the basically first four to five months of key part to kind of get us through the architectural design phase, which will allow us to move into engineering. And with that, I'll return this to the mayor.
Thank you. Before I entertain questions, first of all, thank you for the update, and I know we're all looking forward to the improvement to our town. Literally hundreds of thousands of people throughout the year go through our town, and we're the most active train stop on this station. So I think it's definitely something that is important to our town. I appreciate the fact that staff went out and applied and got over $20 million in grants to, so that we don't have to ask for our residents for that money. Before I open up the floor for questions, Mr. Grabowski, is there anything you would like to add to Mr. Harbor, or you want to add to what Mr. Harbor has said?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just stress that the grants are an important part of this project, as you said, and we want to make sure that we are not in any position with federal, state, or any other organization where they ask why we're not moving forward. We understand that it is a very significant project for the downtown, and the way that CDM Smith has it laid out, I think it's very, very fundamental to move forward, and we look forward to continue working with them, the Architectural Building Commission and the council on this. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Mr. Harbor. Jim, do you have any, city manager, anybody raising their hands electronically?
Alderman Toledo.
Alderman Toledo, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. One comment, one, I fully support this project. I think that this is an important project for the future of Elmhurst, but I also think it's reasonable for all of us and our residents who live in Elmhurst, who are constantly thinking about and concerned about COVID and the impact on commuter traffic and the use of Metro, for us to very specifically address why it's important to continue to move forward now, given that ridership is down in this window of time due to the pandemic. So if Mr. Harper or city manager or the mayor could address that question. And then secondly, I think some of us are aware of some legal contention between Union Pacific and Metro, and I would appreciate any insight as to if or how that might impact this project moving forward. Thank you.
Jim, do you want to opine before I ask, or Mr. Harbor?
Yes, thank you. Alderman Toledo brings up a great point, that ridership is down right now, we understand that, and we expect that, the forecast that Metro has given us in an 18- to 24-month period, they expect to be back near where it was, probably more towards the 24-month period. That's when we expect the train station construction to be in full swing, and by the time we get back to what was once our peak ridership, we should have a brand-new station with appropriate spacing. As Alderman Toledo alluded to, we are basically doubling the size of the station and adding warming shelters and other platform areas that will help spread people out, and hopefully they'll feel comfortable enough with that spacing to be able to wait for the train here in Elmhurst. Does that answer your question, Alderman Toledo?
Yes, thank you on that one.
Mr. Harbor, anything you want to add?
I'd just like to reiterate, you know, Elmhurst has historically been based around the downtown, and that history goes back through a lot of difficult periods. And, you know, the new station, we would hope, would be around in good condition for at least a 50-year or more period. So this is a long-term investment, which there are other benefits just kind of to remember on the project. There's a pedestrian underpass that would not only be able to be utilized by commuters, but also by pedestrians that are blocked with continuing freight even during the COVID situation on York Street. And this also involves substantial reconfigurations of the drop-off pedestrian access, and has a lot of safety components as well. And then finally, I, and this is just my kind of feeling, is that the city has invested a lot in the downtown over the last 30 years, and I think the thought was that this is one of the last pieces to that puzzle. With respect to the Union Pacific-Metra discussion, this was a negotiation year for those. I think there's a lot of public information, and I would in no way want to get in the middle of that, but both parties have indicated that they will continue service. What they're negotiating very strongly is how that service and who will be responsible for providing that service, which has issues about liability, labor, and a lot of the issues I know we're all familiar with. So it's a negotiation year, and the Surface Transportation Board has, Metro sought an injunction from them, but again, both parties have made it clear that they see a bright future for commuting on this line and other Union Pacific lines.
Thank you. Anyone else? Alderman Brennan, you have your hand up?
I do, thank you, Mayor. This, you'd mentioned this in your opening remarks, and Mr. Harbor and the city manager also mentioned it. I see three funding sources here, federal, state, and local, and I hear a level of confidence that these funds are secured. Is there, you know, this council has the ability for a future year, for example, that we vote on a budget. So is there any chance that these funds magically could become unavailable to us in the future? Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Alderman Brennan, I would, I guess I would divide that three ways, as you have as well, and with the federal dollars being the most secure of those dollars, the state funds being the next most secure through the STP program, which is really a federal program, and the Metro at most question. We are in the process of working through an IGA with Metro that would guarantee those dollars. We have not heard from them otherwise right now, and so we are proceeding right now as though we will get those dollars and we will sign that IGA.
Seeing none electronically, anyone in the council chambers? Seeing none, we're going to, seeing that there's no more questions, I'm going to thank Mr. Harbor for his time and his input, and we look forward to keeping this program on track even during these difficult times. Thank you. And I think he's going to sign off if he has not already done so.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, council.
Oh, there he is, okay. All right, thank you very much. Okay, pardon me. That's agenda item three, agenda item four, receipt of written communications from the public. At this time, is there anybody in our audience? And I'm going to include city manager over in our annex over there. Is there anybody who has any written communications they wish to submit? Please raise your hand. Anyone in this audience has any written communication? Mr. Cop, anybody there have any written communication to submit?
Yes, we have one person.
Yeah, I submitted it earlier.
He submitted it earlier.
Great, okay. Everything good there, Mr. Cop?
Yeah, he submitted through the email.
Okay.
It's a PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, yeah, we did post what we got by what time? Five o'clock. Five o'clock, we have posted everything we've received. Okay, on to, so that's it for written communications, no more written communications. Oh, well. Onto, so that's it for written communications. No more written communications. Oh, well. This is an, this is a public forum, agenda item five, couple of things. First of all, this is an opportunity for anybody in City Hall or anybody online who signed up earlier to address city council on any issue they so choose. Respect for others who may want to speak and respect for work that we want to get done, that we need to get done here this evening. We ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. They're your three minutes. They're not transferable. If you go over your three minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder and ask you to wrap up. Specifically, we ask that you address your comments to the chair. We are recording this, so we ask that you state your name for the recording. Your address is optional. Due to the audio issues that I mentioned earlier in this meeting as well, we're under the same constraint in terms of being able to record people here and have them heard. So while you're encouraged certainly to sit and listen to our meeting, if you are going to be in public comment directly across the hall is audio and video that Mike Cop has set up. I know there's some folks over there. And I think we had one person who said they were going to dial in. Is that correct, city manager?
Everybody on the floor for public comment for the city of Elmhurst. There's nobody dialed in.
She signed up to be present.
The person who dialed, okay. So for those of you who are new to this, in this, in this current time, so that we don't lose anybody, we, we, we do have a dial-in availability for participation. We ask that you register before five o'clock to do that. And I always take those comments first because I want to avoid any audio glitches. So apparently we have one person sign up, but that person also showed up, so they'll be, I assume, participating in the public forum directly instead of dialing in. So with that having been said, Clerk Tamer, do you have a list or is it the same list that Mike Cop has?
I do, Mayor, yes.
All right, so we're going to go with the list. Okay, go ahead.
Abby Cicero, I said that right.
Hi, everyone. Good evening. My name's Abby Cicero. I'm a resident. I will be reading a comment on behalf of another Elmhurst resident who did not feel safe speaking in front of you all, but who would like to share her story. Good evening, everyone. I'm a member of this community from Elmhurst, Word 5. While I recognize it may be strange to have my words come out of someone who has not seen the extent of my tribulations growing up biracial in Elmhurst, I could not ask for a better ally or leader to do it for me. I have heard a lot of people recently talk about how growing up in Elmhurst, they always thought of our town being progressive and understanding of the diversities that make this nation and our community strong. Granted, most of these comments have come from my white friends who have become increasingly self-aware of themselves and the privileges they possess. Growing up, I always felt like Elmhurst wanted nothing to do with me or who I was. My biological father had instilled a lot of pride in being Mexican growing up when he was around. He taught me basic Spanish and took me to beautiful festivals where I dressed up in populico. And I never really thought that was different until I was in kindergarten, thank goodness, for five years of blissful ignorance. Two things happened to me in kindergarten that I carry with me to this day. The first was being laughed at for wearing my populico to my kindergarten class's Cinco de Mayo party. Because at the time, I was unaware that May 5th was actually a half-assed apology for years of racism and an excuse for people to drink. I thought at the time I was celebrating my culture, which I had been taught to have pride in. The second kindergarten event was three girls cornering me and telling me I could never like the boy I had a crush on because he had blonde hair and blue eyes and I had brown hair, brown eyes and tan skin. I can still name those girls and hear them say, it just wouldn't look good together. And yes, we were five and I should get over things, but man, those were the times I ever felt different or lesser than everyone else for reasons unknown to myself. And those words are part of me and something I tried to ignore, but with each year, something new with Elmhurst schools or cops wanted me hiding my differences as much as I could. Whether it was being called the S-word or not just any bitch, but a Mexican bitch, or being called Dora, or having my dad stopped on the side of the road three times in the same school year for walking my bike home. There's plenty of more stories of white friends telling me I'm not really Mexican because I don't speak enough Spanish and having Latinx people at school tell me I'm too white or having to apologize to Spanish-speaking parents. Growing up in fear of cops taking my dad away despite his green card and people spreading rumors my senior year at Dork that he had been deported and I didn't know when I would see him again. I felt hard to complain about what, about all of this when I know that there are people who were raised by BIPOC families who have been through a lot worse, remembering my mom makes me equal part white. But my feelings and experiences are real and are something I'd like to see change in Elmhurst. I don't know if the change comes from parents talking to their kids about acceptance and diversity so that no other little kid has to hear the S-word or feel ashamed of pride in being biracial, or it has to do with District 205 expanding their education so I don't feel stupid asking about Mexican oppression and what's been done when my librarian talks about Western European xenophobia from Ellis Island times. I don't know what has to be done and I wish I had more suggestions, but I felt important to share parts of my story to see that there is a real problem in Elmhurst that needs fixing. Thank you.
Clerk Tamer?
Clara Lewis. Good evening. Good evening. My name is Clara Lewis. I believe the residents of the city of Elmhurst would benefit from a diversity and inclusion commission. Elmhurst is a segregated town. According to census.gov, the black, indigenous, Asian and Latino populations of Elmhurst are 1.4%, 0.3%, 6% and 8.3% respectively. The white population is 89.2%. According to census.gov, 3.5% of Elmhurst's population lives in poverty. The segregation and economic inequity creates barriers between us. These barriers keep us from seeing and treating our neighbors like friends and equals. We cannot create a fair society if we live in a segregated and socially inequitable town. If Elmhurst is to be a welcoming place where all people want to live and succeed, Elmhurst should devote resources toward underrepresented populations and have leadership from the communities who are most affected by these unequal conditions. I support the creation of a diversity and inclusion commission. Thank you.
Nina Villa Senor. Hi, my name is Nina Villa Senor. I'm here today to ask Mayor Morley what action plans he has to make sure Elmhurst is a welcoming community to the BIPOC residents who are already living in Elmhurst. I have worked in Elmhurst for over 13 years and have lived here for over five. During that time, I have often felt like an outsider and unwelcome in this majority white town. Not only have I been at the receiving end of multiple verbal racist attacks over the years, but I have firsthand knowledge and experience with the racism allowed to thrive in Elmhurst schools. Since George Floyd's murder, murder at the hands of police officers well over two months ago, Mayor Morley has not made a public statement affirming Black Lives Matter. By city officials remaining silent with some often saying they can't take the political stance is in itself a stance. Sometime in the beginning of June, Mayor Morley announced the city was planning a public forum for residents to ask questions about the police department and its policies and training. We are now in August, still with no set date, which makes it seem like this isn't a priority to either the mayor or Elmhurst Police Chief. As a mixed-race person of color living in your town, I do not feel valued. I feel forgotten and excluded because of my race. There is major work to be done in Elmhurst to make our town inclusive to non-white members. I believe a start would be to create a diversity inclusion committee. The BIPOC community members of Elmhurst want to feel represented, included, and that we have a voice. I am asking Mayor Morley to be vocal and transparent about what his plans are to move Elmhurst in the right direction to show that we can be a progressive and inclusive town for all. Thank you.
Richard Mandigo.
Hi, I'm Richard Mandigo. I've been a resident of Elmhurst since 1989. Moved to the city when I was adult and moved about seven houses down from my parents when I finally moved back for the child. I submitted earlier today this following thing, which is a PowerPoint and a 22-page academic paper on diversity initiatives in the suburbs of Elmhurst specifically. I'm going to very briefly cover the grounds contained therein. To begin with, Chicago Metro has become increasingly more diverse over the last several decades. To give you an idea, DuPage County has seen an increase of about 12,000 people in terms of residential population. However, the foreign-born component of that is 30,000. So without minorities, DuPage in general will have lost 18,000 people over that just 10-year period. Further, research by academicians has suggested that communities that attempt to integrate and participate in diversity initiatives can be successful, retain essentially a similar financial stance than majority white suburbs, reduce racism and offer more opportunities significantly for minority populations. Failing to plan for such a thing will, has been seen in numerous suburbs surrounding Elmhurst and particularly inner circle suburbs, that it increases white flight and segregation, reduces home value, which further reduces the tax base and, and social services, which is a death spiral we've seen in numerous eastern suburbs from here. As we know, Elmhurst is about 89%. Because we're a bedroom community, we are, we gain the ability to specifically put in development initiatives that keep our housing population consistent. And it has been since almost the 1960s. We've been about 44,000, we're at 46.5 now. We have excellent schools. We're landlocked by the highways. So again, rail is a major point of transportation. But I should note that over the last 10 years, the surrounding suburbs on all sides have a significantly higher minority population than Elmhurst. In the past, Elmhurst has faced several discrimination lawsuits. Now, these were related to sexual harassment and ageism, not race. And they are not related to anybody in the current administration. But there are no specific policy changes that resulted from those. And Elmhurst does not have a specific language on diversity, inclusion or outreach like several other suburbs such as Oak Park, Lombard, Addison, Naperville, Aurora and Elgin. Further, the Elmhurst city website is only English. And while we have committees on youth and senior issues, there are none for diversity. I don't even really need to mention the controversy that occurred in the last couple of weeks that sort of put a spotlight on Elmhurst as a place that does not feel welcome to minorities. Now, my proposed solutions include a three-pronged approach. One.
Sir.
Training and government, yes, sir.
You're, you're, you're over your speaking time. Could you wrap up your comments, please?
Sure. A three-pronged approach. Number one would be diversity training in government. Explain and emphasize the importance of diversity and inclusion. Number two would be a diversity outreach commission, including utilizing existing resources such as those found in other towns and on CMAP, which has an entire immigration and integration toolkit provided by the state of Illinois for communities. And number three is to implement a diverse hiring practice that includes formalizing the commitment to diversity and expand targeted hiring and internships to diverse institutions, for example, Elmhurst University for internship positions. Thank you very much.
Matt Shiley.
Well, similar to Abby, my name is Matt. I'm Word Three. I will be reading a comment from someone who did not feel comfortable speaking in person today, but still wish to have their comment read aloud. Good evening. As a young person of color who grew up in Elmhurst, it both saddens and gives me hope to be writing this comment today. I am saddened because at this point in our town, country and world's history, what we are still demanding of our elected officials is simply to begin caring. It is no mystery that systemic racial injustice manifests in every corner of society, from our education to our housing, to our local and national government and beyond. I could tell you the many ways that growing up as a person of color in a predominantly white community like Elmhurst has had a negative and traumatizing impact on me. But this particular platform would do it no justice. Instead, I wish to express why writing this comment gives me hope. While the city's leadership has demonstrated both inaction and silence amidst the largest movement in our nation's history, they have simultaneously demonstrated their non-commitment to anti-racism. In other words, our elected officials have demonstrated that they have no problem upholding systemic racism. What gives me hope, however, is that this is, is that this movement will not be subsiding nor disappearing at any point in the future. It is always the right and necessary time to be working to support anti-racism. If you are an elected official who is lay to the party, we now welcome you with open arms. Contrary to what you may hear or believe, this movement is not about division. It is about our shared humanity and our collective liberation. This is not a political issue, but rather a human rights issue. The work of this movement is neither a choice, but simply one's moral duty as an inhabitant of this planet. We are simply asking you to fully begin to care and listen. This is merely the beginning and we look forward to seeing a truly thriving, diverse community in Elmhurst in the near future. We hope that you as elected officials are ready to join the movement or else make way for the kinds of officials who are willing to stand for justice. Thank you for your time.
Drew Stricker.
Hi, everybody. My name is Drew Stricker. I've been an Elmhurst resident since 2015. I live on Emery Lane. And since 2015, I've had three Black Lives Matter and We Welcome Refugees signs stolen from my front yard. My wife is Indian and my two daughters are biracial. And they have been harassed multiple times by neighborhood kids who have banged on the door, enchanted pro-Trump and anti-black messages at them. What I want for my children is for them to grow up in an anti-racist, pro-black community that they and I can be proud of. Step one seems to be exploring and then forming a multiracial and multi-generational coalition to study the systemic and historical racism that exists in Elmhurst that can get to the root causes of why only 2% of Elmhurst is black. There's a saying, what gets attention grows. And so there's opportunities to create diversity, equity and inclusion, standing items on the city council meeting's agenda at our library. And I've seen in all the library newsletters, no mention of this movement and in our schools. So my open question to you is, how will you reallocate resources to stand, to start or further anti-racism initiatives? I want to end with reading an email that I sent to Mayor Morley on June 15th and did not receive a response. It said, "I attended Saturday's march and rally for racial justice at Wilder Park. There were over a dozen powerful speakers, several of whom were York High School students or alumni. As a voter who's concerned about inequities in Elmhurst, I'm compelled to ask, where do you stand on Black Lives Matter? Have you offered your support to this movement on social media or elsewhere?" And that goes for the rest of you all, too. Those are questions. Thank you.
Susan O'Donnell Warren.
Hey, everyone. I'm here tonight reading a statement from my friend, Mrs. Victoria Halsel, who couldn't be with us tonight. Mrs. Halsel is a friend to many of you on the council. Mrs. Halsel is a friend to many of you on the council. To those who don't know her, I asked her to give me a brief description to share. Mrs. Halsel is a black woman of color, mother of children, enrolled in District 205, a social justice advocate, an entrepreneur, startup company partner, a school volunteer, and community outreach supporter. Mrs. Halsel's letter. "Good evening, Mayor Morley and Elmhurst City Council members. I come before the council to ask for sincere and thoughtful consideration of the following: A newly-formed Elmhurst Coalition for Racial Justice and Inclusivity to be composed of community leaders, city officials, business owners, residents, students, particularly those that are considered black, people of color, and/or in a marginalized sector of this community. A formal public statement in support of racial justice and inclusivity, indicative of the large population of Elmhurst residents currently leading these efforts privately. A joint coalition in action plan with York Community High School and the Elmhurst School Board to attract and retain a substantially more diverse teaching and support staff. In addition, I am asking for the council to consider ongoing social change forums with marginalized student groups within Elmhurst 205 to ensure our schools remain safe, fully free, and inclusive. A concerted effort to diversify Elmhurst City Council by a formal reconsideration of the rejection of Melissa Villanueva's alderman application and a public statement informing the community of such reconsideration. The creation of an Elmhurst Mental Health and Special Services Coalition with a charter to join forces with the Elmhurst Police Department to devise an actionable plan for tending to non-life-threatening emergencies in Elmhurst. This coalition would be composed of health professionals, law enforcement, social workers, school board members, resident advocates, and city officials. Thank you for your time, your open mind, and consideration." Melissa Villanueva.
What was the next name?
Melissa Villanueva.
Okay. Hello, City Council. My name is Melissa Villanueva. Many of you know me as the owner of Brew Point, and most recently, you may know me as someone who applied for Ward I Alder Person. I write to you today as a personal plea in the light of current events regarding race in Elmhurst. My world changed the day that George Floyd was killed and the Black Lives Matter protests came to Elmhurst. I've worked incredibly hard to be a successful person of color in our town. And if you ever thought... I have not thought of Melissa as a person of color, or I don't see how color would change Melissa's experience in Elmhurst. It's because I have done the painful work of erasing a part of my identity and staying relatively quiet in order to achieve personal success. The amount of times I've had to swallow my words when racism occurs is uncountable at this point. I've had to work with city workers who have outright told me they prefer white baristas to brown baristas. I've watched brilliant people of color be passed up for commission positions because they did not have the right connections. I've had a black barista that worked with us quit with a strong feedback that our community was racist towards him. And I will admit that as a leader, I failed him in creating a safe space. And a lot of the work I am doing now is in the hope that I am growing as a leader and as a person. All of these things were before COVID. Now, my business has a Black Lives Matter poster in front of it. We've had a number of people come up to our business yelling at my staff, saying, "Those people kill each other, why would you bring that here?" Or, "I'm going to complain about you on Facebook if you don't take that poster down." We keep these posters up because the amount of people coming to our window giving a heartfelt thank you for the safety that they feel when seeing those words is incredibly important to us. As a business, not only have you been faced with the pandemic, but we have received disturbing comments on all fronts, saying we are disgusting for not doing enough for Black Lives Matter movement, to being interpreted as anti-police for sharing local activist photos. And I want this to be really clear. All I have ever wanted is to be a place in Elmhurst that truly welcomes everybody as long as an individual isn't harming others. The vision nationally is palpable. Palpable. And those same feelings are here in our town. I know that I, along with many others, feel unsafe and we feel vulnerable. The continued silence by leadership in our town perpetuates those feelings, and the gap in our community continues to grow. So I ask, will you help set an example by leading through listening and by taking steps to create a better, more inclusive Elmhurst? I know there are so many intermountable issues that city councils are dealing with right now. I mean, you have the pandemic, you have the economy, you have school systems, you have the city's budget. So why even bring up something like a diversity inclusion commission? It is because without being heard, included, and represented, those who are often left out will be continuing to be left out during these most desperate of times. Please consider that having a diversity inclusion commission has the power to ensure that all of Elmhurst knows they are embraced because of and not in spite of their differences, and that these differences have the power to make us stronger as a community in a time where we need it most. Thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor. I don't know if there's anybody else.
Okay, that's it for who signed up for public forum. Is there anybody in this room who wants to participate in public forum? If so, you can raise your hand, and I'll make sure they keep an eye out for you over there. Seeing nobody here, Mr. Cop, is there anybody in the public comment room that did not have an opportunity to sign up but wishes to address the council at this time?
Yes, there was one person.
Okay, and can you, at the end, after that, I'm going to ask you to also ask if there's anybody online. But go ahead, the one person you've identified, make sure, as with everybody else, please state your name.
Hello, council members. My name is Denise Phillips, and I live here in Elmhurst. I'm relatively new here. I moved here from Forest Park, and it was in quite a different experience. Forest Park, I felt like was very inclusive. Elmhurst, not so. Within the first week I moved here, I heard a person living by me had called the cops on a person of color who delivered a package, even though he was wearing, you know, the uniform and had the truck. And I was a little bit surprised by that. These people here are not people coming to you complaining. These are people here who knew an opportunity. This is your opportunity to take Elmhurst and move Elmhurst 100 steps ahead. And all of these suggestions that I've heard are excellent suggestions. Mayor Morley, this doesn't just rest on you. All of you aldermen that are sitting there and council members, it's all on you to take action. Take what people are saying here, take it to heart. Take and open a mind and take action and do something about this and make Elmhurst a place that is inclusive and people are proud to live here. And that's all I ask. Thank you for your time.
Okay, anyone else, Mr. Cop, or anybody online?
Is there anybody on the phone for public comment? No, there's nobody else.
And no one else in the room?
No, sir.
Okay, that concludes public forum for this evening. Thank you all for participating. We will go on to announcements. Agenda item six, any announcements from the dais? Alderman Palmsky.
Thank you, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Okay, so I would like to update the council and the public and continue to extend an invitation. After two meetings on this topic, the Commission on Youth is finalizing our plans for a panel event that focuses on youth and their experiences relating to disparate treatment, exclusion, or bullying because of race, skin color, culture, or religion, or any other difference. Our next meeting is on Monday, August 12th, at 12:30 PM in Conference Room Number Two. All are welcome to participate physically in the meeting room as Phase Four of Restore Illinois guidelines allow. All are also invited to participate remotely. And that's not just in public comment, there will be public comment, but all are welcome around the table. We encourage especially anybody interested in furthering the conversation, raising awareness, planning some programming, some of which was mentioned during public comments, extend that invitation to please come participate. And just as, I guess, information to anybody following this, to find out when we have meetings, you can go on the city website, you can look up commissions, and those meeting dates are generally listed in advance. Within, well, at least 48 hours in advance, the meeting agendas are posted, and there will be instructions there on how to participate remotely, if that's what people choose to do. But all meetings are public, open to the public unless we have an executive session and we announce that after we convene, and that there's always public comment. But for meetings, some commission meetings, the participants are welcome around the table, and that's how it stands. So thank you.
Any other announcements? Jim, anybody have their names raised? On the consent agenda, Agenda Item Seven. At this time, is there any item on the consent agenda any alderman wishes to have removed? To vote no or provide further comment? Alderman Graham. Thank you, 7 dot 23. Okay, anyone else? Alderman Graham, I mean, City Manager, anyone else? I will now entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda minus Item 7.23. Motion by Alderman Brennan, second by Alderman Mulliner. Port Tamer.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaludo.
Aye.
Park. Won't she type?
Alderman Park, can you hear us? Alderman Park, you're unmuted. If anyone wants to call in, I'll let you know how the vote goes.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremos.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
I have 12 ayes without Alderman Park and one absent.
Okay, well, it was 12 ayes without Alderman Park. And she texted in that she is approving the motion. So it's 13-0. Motion carries. Consent agenda is approved on to Agenda Item 7.23. I ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance, or is it a resolution? Ordinance.
An ordinance extending temporary executive powers pursuant to Section 3.16 of Elmhurst Municipal Code and pursuant to 65 ILCS 5/11-1-6.
But this forecouncil asks for a motion to approve the ordinance as read motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Dunn. Alderman Mulliner, your motion.
I'll just reiterate what I've said in the past, and that is that we're in this strange time period with executive orders from the state coming at us right and left, and we need to be prepared. We need to allow the mayor to have that flexibility, and he has done so in an appropriate manner in making sure that he contacts us as he moves forward with any of those executive orders. We are, as has been stated in the past, moving forward, trying to codify as many of those executive orders as possible. But at the same time, there are opportunities where we may need to continue to move forward. We seem to be dealing with a moving target with this pandemic that we're dealing with. So it's in our best interest to have the mayor with that flexibility to be able to move nimbly as needed.
Alderman Graham.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've pulled this over the last few times. I still feel the same that this is not a necessity any longer. The reason being is as we are presenting tonight, and if it moves forward, we have a report and ordinance proposed this evening to be able to pass in the same committee meeting or council meeting. We have tools in our tool belt that we could and should utilize in this type of instance during this pandemic. We've shown it in past council meetings as well that we are able to work successfully without utilizing executive orders. Anything that we have not codified to date, if there is a necessity for that, we've had plenty of opportunities, plenty of weeks to do so, and we haven't. So I don't feel that there's any necessity to do so unless we take those appropriate steps. I'm not going to support this because I believe, and we as a council have demonstrated, that we are able to do this within the current structure we have as a city council. The report and ordinance that is on there tonight from the Finance Committee, it was discussed within committee to possibly utilize the executive order versus suspending the rules. It was obviously due to what you see before you tonight, agreed upon to go the route of suspending the rules versus utilizing the executive order. We could and we should move forward with utilizing those tools versus continuing with the executive order. Thank you.
Any other comments? I ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill.
Aye.
Chaludo.
Aye.
Park. She says she's cutting.
Aye.
Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Brennan. Mulliner. Deuter.
Aye.
Veremos. Leader. Alderman Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Nay.
Palmsky.
Aye.
12 ayes, one nay, one absent.
12 ayes, one nay, motion carries. Agenda 7.23 is approved. I'll do Agenda Item Eight. Some recommendations of appointed elected officials. Mayor Morley, that's me. Couple of things. We had two successful recycling events over the weekend. One at Elmhurst University, the other in cooperation with DuPage County. As has been mentioned, I think, in a previous comment, we are still in Phase Four of Restore or Recover Illinois, Restore Illinois program as laid out by the governor. There has been talk by the governor and his staff of certain regions that are falling into, I think he called them warning zones. We're not one of those as of today. But if anything changes, I would direct folks to the city of Elmhurst website. We have a COVID-19 tab, and you can get your up-to-date information as it relates to Phase Four and Restore Illinois. That having been said, if and when you can, I ask that you continue to support our local businesses during this time. That's it for me, City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I would...
I will continue in my capacity as a co-chair of the Transportation Technical Committee and also on a couple other committees, and we have some other staff who are participating as well. Thank you.
Any other reports or recommendations? Jim, anybody raising their hand?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on to Agenda Item 9.1. This is an ordinance. I'd ask Clerk Tamer to read the ordinance.
An ordinance to amend Section 41.09 entitled penalty of Chapter 41 entitled Motor Vehicle Code of the Municipal Code of Ordinances of the City of Elmhurst, Illinois. See Item 7.10.
Okay, to put this for council, ask for a motion to approve the ordinance as read. Motion by Alderman Toledo, second by Alderman Levin. Alderman Toledo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is in reference to Item 7.10 on our consent agenda. Basically, what we're asking for tonight is to suspend the rules, to approve both our report from our committee as well as the ordinance tonight. The topic is related to the fines for our vehicle stickers for residents of the city of Elmhurst. So it was staff's recommendation, and our committee concurred, and the council approved the report during the consent agenda, that we are interested in easing the burden in some small way on the residents of Elmhurst as it relates to fines for not having their vehicle stickers displayed as of now. We are extending the $25 fine till the end of August. The normal penalty under our code would be a $50 fine at this point in time. So we're changing the code to reduce the fine through the end of August for not displaying the vehicle sticker on a Elmhurst resident car, and I ask for everyone's support. I would point out that the, sort of in reference to Alderman Bram's comment earlier, we are codifying this to end at the end of the year. So the normal ordinance will go back into effect at the beginning of the year. So this is only for the year of 2020. Thank you.
Okay, additional comments? Seeing, then I'll ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park. Okay. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist, absent. Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Nay.
Palmsky.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, motion carries, Agenda 9.23. Agenda item 10, other business, any other business? One thing I forgot to mention in my mayor's report, a bit of sad news, and sorry to report that former Alderman Wagner's mother passed away over the weekend, and I would ask that you keep their family, that's plain, your thoughts and prayers as they go through this difficult time. I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Motion by Alderman Mulliner, second by Alderman Cahill. As we have some folks participating remotely, I'm going to ask Clerk Tamer to call the vote.
Cahill.
Aye.
Toledo.
Aye.
Park. Levin.
Aye.
Kennedy.
Aye.
Hanquist.
Aye.
Brennan.
Aye.
Mulliner.
Aye.
Deuter.
Aye.
Veremis.
Aye.
Leader.
Aye.
Dunn.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Palmsky.
Aye.
12 ayes, zero nays, one absent.
12 ayes, zero nays, motion carries. We are adjourned. Thank you, everybody, for your time and patience.